I will now call to March 19th, 2012, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to Order. If you will stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the Veterans Way Memorial.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rick Howell. I'm a landscape architect here in Kansas City, and it's been my pleasure to be a part of the planning and design of this important project for the city of Blue Springs. I had the good fortune a few years ago of working with your Parks Department on the planning and design of the Gregorio Grounds Park, and it's great to be involved in another project in your city. I want to first make an important point. This project really is a result of a great collaboration of a committee of very good people. We've been working on this for a number of months now, and I want to mention those people. First of all, Eleanor Fraser is kind of our chief of staff. She gives the assignments and cracks the whip, and we get the work done, and she's been doing a very, very great job in leading this committee. Kim Nakahodo is a member and also an employee here at the city. Annette Sago with the school district. Carolyn Gordonier, who's the current president of the Blue Springs Art League, and also basically the originator of this idea for this memorial. John Groves with AdTrans has been doing a lot of great work on the PR side of this, and also did for the Wall That Heals exhibition a few years ago. Larry Randall is a local artist and retired teacher. He came up with the design for this base, for this sculpture that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Steve Wilmann and Dennis Dovell of the Parks Department have been great. Kent and Melissa Iggy have been leading the all-important fundraising effort. And last but not least, Roscoe Ryder, who retired last year from the city so he could spend most of his free time now working on this project, and has been doing a great job in that regard. The general project goals, first and foremost, the intent of this memorial is to honor all veterans that served in the U.S. Armed Forces. Also, the intent is to commemorate the location of the Wall That Heals exhibition that occurred in this park, in Pink Hill Park, in 2010. Will create a space for contemplation and reflection, and also for education. This memorial will accommodate individuals and larger groups, so it needs to have flexibility in that regard. And also, we have a very nice site picked out in Pink Hill Park, and it's important that the design respond to the character of that site. Now, I'm going to talk for a few minutes about kind of the design process and some of the key elements in the design, and then we'll focus a little bit more on the memorial as it's planned at the end. Site selection. Let's see. Okay, good. Pictured is, the Pink Hill Park, the current location of the Restless Recovery Sculpture, designed a few years ago by Kansas City transplant, I guess, an artist, Beth Nybek. The site in which it's currently located, our committee felt good about from the beginning, but we also felt that it was prudent to take a look at the rest of Pink Hill Park and make sure we weren't missing another opportunity. And the aerial photograph on the lower right here shows the current sculpture location. We also looked at a few other possibilities, sites at the entry drive into the park, and when all was considered, we felt that the current site, where the sculpture is located, was really ideal for this memorial, for a couple of reasons. The main drive through the park, which has been renamed Veterans Way, runs along the east side of the site. To the west is the Bar Oak Woods Nature Center. That's a great green backdrop. You can see it in this picture. That won't go away. That site won't be developed in the future as a different use, so we have a nice green vegetative backdrop for this memorial for a long time to come. And of course, you can see an enlargement of the sculpture here, the six-foot-long Restless Recovery Sculpture. The inspiration for the design for this memorial really comes from two things. These three photos are photographs from the Wall That Heals exhibition from 2010. There were 22 black panels that were engraved with fallen soldiers' names, as you can see here. This is kind of an aerial view of one of the events during the exhibition. And then this really, the inspiration for this design stemmed from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. So some of the key components, the black granite of this memorial, the black material here, the engraved names, these are details and served as inspiration for the design of this memorial. Sculpture-based design is very important. We kind of took a twofold approach. First, we studied some large-scale outdoor sculpture in other locations in Kansas City. You can see, these are all at the Nelson. A tall base that really elevates this bronze piece, a lower horizontal base that's nicely scaled for this piece, and then this very large sculpture appears to have no base at all. In fact, it has quite a structure underground. I mentioned Larry Randall had suggested a base design idea for Restless Recovery. These sketches kind of study that. He had suggested an obelisk form, which is basically a square that's a certain dimension at the bottom, and then tapers to a smaller dimension at the top, kind of in this fashion. A very graceful and nice form for a sculpture base. We studied different heights, a four-foot base, an eight-foot base, a 12-foot base, and ultimately, we landed on about a nine-foot-tall base, which proportionally is very nice relative to the six-foot-tall sculpture, and it works very well as far as placing the sculpture at a good viewing height for the site in Pink Hill Park. This is kind of a final site plan. I'll touch on it generally, and then we'll talk about a more finished plan in just a sec, but basically, this is the entire site. This is Veterans Way Drive along the east side, along the bottom, and Bar Oak Woods to the top. We chose to use the entire site for this memorial. In the center, we've placed... Oh, it's back, okay. In the center, we've placed a paved plaza with a sculpture, and then we have kind of nice flowing walkways that lead from parking to the plaza on both sides. These are, this cross-section helps explain the design as well. On the right is Veterans Way Drive. There's a slope down to the plaza. This is a black granite seat wall. It's curved, it's 40 feet long. It helps retain the slope, and it'll be a great place to sit and view the sculpture. This is the Restless Recovery Sculpture on the nine-foot, black granite base. The plaza around, this elevation is really what we'll see from Veterans Way Drive on the east. So it's long, the backdrop of Bar Oak Woods to the west, and of course, the sculpture. Flagpoles are very important, and I'll touch on that in just a sec, but these are drawings that kind of allowed us to finalize the design and then head on to more finished drawings. This is the final site plan. Again, parking on the north, parking on the south, so it's very convenient. The flowing walkways will be black asphalt, kind of like this, from both ends. Plant materials, flowering ornamental trees, shade trees, some existing trees we have, will really make these walkways kind of a nice gradual and inviting connection from the parking to the plaza. We'll have information along the walkways, possibly some related artifacts, signage, and so on that explain what this memorial is all about. Now, in the center here, the plaza, this paved plaza, on this edge is the curved 40-foot-long granite seat wall that I mentioned, and the slope down to the plaza. This is the sculpture Restless Recovery, and this image really, I think, portrays it in a great way, too. We can see the black seat wall, the sculpture very prominent on the nine-foot-tall base. The American flag is obviously very important, and it's on center behind the sculpture. We have the State of Missouri flag, the POW flag, kind of flanking the sculpture in the plaza. The ornamental trees provide scale at kind of a human level. Shade trees will provide shade and more spatial definition. This is actually a picture of black granite. It's interesting, because you think, well, black granite is black granite. It's kind of like white wall paint. There are 100 different shades and different types, and actually, Eleanor and Roscoe have been working with granite suppliers in Kansas City to pick out just the right black granite, but we want a very deep black. It'll be a polished granite for the seat wall and for the base. Now, this little drawing is a four-foot square, basically donor paver inset into the plaza. It'll be black granite as well, and there are opportunities for larger pavers representing larger donors in the center, and then progressively moving out to smaller pavers and smaller donors at the edge. And we hope to fill this up, and we can, the design is flexible, we can add additional pavers if we're that fortunate. But anyway, this basically is the proposed design for the memorial. Right now, the project's status, fundraising is underway. As I mentioned with the granite, we're working to finalize the materials and the equipment selection. Roscoe especially has been coordinating with contractors and bidders to really tie down the budget, understand how much this is going to cost. Right now, we plan to start construction in June, and an opening ceremony has been scheduled for October 2nd of this year. Sounds like a long way off, but it'll go very fast, I'm sure. And I do want to mention the website that's available for obtaining more information about the project, and also making an online donation if you like, bluespringswallthatheals.net. So with that, we would love to entertain questions.
Are there any questions, council? Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you for that presentation. It was an exciting time in Blue Springs when we brought the wall that heals, and it's good to see us keep that spirit alive with this particular project. And again, for the people that you mentioned, you know, my heartfelt thanks to them for wanting to do this, and, you know, I don't want to start singling people out, but they know who they are, continues to support this city and making Blue Springs what it is. So thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4200. Is there anyone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4200, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Third plat lots 353 through 378, and tracks D-1 and E.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill 4200, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Third plat lots 353 through 378, and tracks D-1 and E.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Michael Bell.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4379.
Bill 4201, there's a request to continue it until the next council meeting on April 2nd. So that one, we will skip, and move to the next one, House Bill 4202. Introduction?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4202, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Fifth plat lots 241 through 249, 264 through 271, 286 through 287, and track D-2.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4202, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Fifth plat lots 241 through 249, 264 through 271, 286 through 287, and track D-2.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4202, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Fifth plat lots 241 through 249, 264 through 271, 286 through 287, and track D-2.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Michael Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4381.
Next, we have introduction of Bill Number 4203.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4203, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Sixth plat lots 218 through 230, 272 through 285, and tracked O-2.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4203, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO. Sixth plat lots 218 through 230, 272 through 285, and tracked O-2.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Michael Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4381.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4204.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4204, an ordinance designating the Chicago and Alton Depot a historic building.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4204, an ordinance designating the Chicago and Alton Depot a historic building.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Michael Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4382.
Councilman Edmondson?
Councilman Levesey, can you join me down front? As you know, both Councilman Levesey and I have been through the Citizens Police Academy, and Councilman Levesey is the current president of the Blue Springs Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. I said as second vice president in that organization. And one of our major things that we did, or have done in the last couple of years, and you all are familiar with that, but it is shop with the cop. We had a very successful outing this year, served over 30 kids. Was a, I think, well-attended affair. It was, the mayor obviously was there, and numerous of you have been there. It was a great time, but as a thank you both for the mayor and for the city, Eric, we have plaques to present both of you, as a small thank you for, give you a reminder of what shop with the cop was. Anything on your side?
We had 30 kids this year, and 20 last year, so that's 50 kids total in just the two years. I think we've raised probably about $8,000 to go towards this, and we're able to roll some of that into next year as well. So we're really excited about the progress in just a short time, and it's a great program that has been a real great partnership between our organization, as the Alumni Association, and the police department, to kind of get some positive press rather than those flashing lights in the rearview mirror. We're able to see what kind of good progress that the police department can be in the community. So we're glad to present these to you guys. You want to come receive these? Should we come up there with you?
We had great community involvement in this, and we've given these plaques out all over the community, and you'll probably see them at some of the local restaurants and that you might attend, but here are yours.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Certainly, that is a great program, and I tell you, I get so much satisfaction out of seeing those children go through Target and shop. This year, I was assigned one of the young people to go around and shop with them, and them trying to make up their minds, what do I get, Mom? What do I get there? They're not thinking about themselves, they're thinking about their family. Who would like this? So it's very gratifying to be able to participate in this, and certainly, on behalf of everybody involved, we thank you for this, and we will have twin plaques in the city administrator's office and the mayor's office. We will have Ray put this up tomorrow.
I just want to go on record saying that I don't have nearly as many as the mayor has.
And that's the way it ought to be. Thank you so much. That brings us to Merrill announcements. We're going to go right into thoughts to ponder. You know, I mentioned last council meeting that the month of March is Women's Month, and last time, we recognized a quote from Helen Keller. This time, I want to recognize, and she has a lot of quotes, Marion Anderson, opera singer. And she was born in 1902 and died in 1993, so she was 91 years old. But she went on to become one of the great African-American women of the 20th century with her voice. I couldn't make up a man, of all of her quotable quotes, there are two I have to share, not just one. The first one says, "As long as you keep a person down, some part of you has to be down there to hold the person down." So it means you cannot soar as you otherwise might. And it says a lot. And the next one, "There are many persons ready to do what is right because their hearts, because their hearts, they know is right, but they hesitate, waiting for the other fellow to make the first move, and he in turn waits for you." So all of those are very profound statements, and again, we honor women and their contributions to this great society that we live in. Councilman Bowerman?
Mayor, I might say the greatest woman in my life is my mother, and she is 82 years old tonight. It's her birthday.
Yes, be sure and tell her happy birthday on our behalf. She's, I know her, she's a very wonderful lady.
Thank you.
You bet. That concludes my Merrill announcements. That brings us to the visitor's section, and I have two visitors' appearance forms. Mr. Randy Salee, would you like to come up?
Mayor Ross, and the city council, and the staff, I appreciate you listening to me tonight, and I am here, I'd like to bring to the attention of the council and the staff, an ordinance that we are struggling with here within the city. We're not only struggling with it currently, but we've struggled with it for a number of years, and it's ordinance 407.010, and it is a 35% driveway rule. In other words, the... 407.010. And it is a 35% driveway rule. In other words, that your driveway area on a particular lot cannot exceed 35% of your front yard area. And I believe that this ordinance was adopted back in the late 90s. I want to say like 1996. And then there was a revision to that ordinance, I believe, that happened around 2005 or 2006, which allowed for cul-de-sac lots to have a 50% area of driveway of the front yard area. And what I'm asking for is, I'm asking for the council to reconsider that ordinance. And I know that probably has to be done with a, probably a committee that would review that. And the reason that I'm asking for that is because in the times that we're building in, as opposed to maybe back in the late 90s, and I built in the late 80s and 90s and on up until today, fortunately, but our requirements are changing, or have changed. I would say that in most cases, back in the 90s, a lot of homes were built with two-car garages. I know when developers' land was probably not as expensive, and when developers developed a subdivision, they had wide lots, wide front yards. Now, in the past few years, of the lots that have been developed and of what I've seen, many lots are sized down because of the cost of the ground, or even because the consumer doesn't really care to maintain and take care of as large of an area as they used to. And when we're trying to go ahead and provide a three-car garage home, we're struggling to be able to put a driveway in that's functional. And I see it put, I see these driveways put in that are tapered excessively, or maybe the driveway's pulled in from the sides of the garage, even to, even to the extent where people open their garage, their car door, and they step out of their car, and they're on grass, as opposed to being on concrete. And the ones that are tapered, in our case, where we're building in some areas, they have to be tapered so extreme that you cannot pull into your third-car garage without getting onto the grass. At least, it's a difficult, difficult to get into that third-car bay without getting through the yard. And I don't believe that was the intent of the ordinance when it was put into effect. I do agree and realize that aesthetically, we want it to look pleasing from the street. And I do realize that's probably the reasoning of that ordinance. But Zalman and myself, and Zalman's with Summit Custom Homes, and he attended with me tonight, you know, we made a quick calculation that back whenever, if you had a lot that was 100 foot wide, and you had 25%, or excuse me, a 25-foot building line setback, and you took 35% of that, that would allow you to pour a driveway that was full car, full width, 35 foot wide all the way out to the street. And nowadays, when we're buying a lot that's, say, 70 feet wide, when we're trying to pour driveway, doing the same calculation, that only allows our driveway to be 24 and 1/2 feet wide. And most three-car garages that we put in are minimum of 31 feet wide. Therefore, it's almost impossible to put that third-car garage driveway in, again, and meet the ordinance. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm just asking for a reconsideration. We've been building in a subdivision south, on the south part of town, and in which we've, we've had, over the last 12 months, we've been very fortunate in the fact that, in the fact that we've sold several homes, and we're continuing to sell homes. And we want to continue building product that's, you know, functional for people. And we both received, I think, at the, around the latter part of March, a notice of violation on some of the homes, not only the homes that we're about to close on, but also on some, three of our model homes that we have, actually have certificates of occupancy and have had those for around a year or a little over. And that's what we've been selling people houses off of. So, it is very difficult for us to go back to a consumer now and say, "Oh, by the way, things are different." And I, and I don't blame that on, on the staff. I don't blame it on, on the code enforcement officers. I just think that, I think that was even an oversight from the very beginning of this project. And it's because the ordinance is even hard to understand, because we met with Robert Barron, and Robert explained the ordinance to us. And in his defense, he sent us an email, follow-up email, a couple days later that said, "Oh, by the way, that was not exactly right, what we were talking about." And again, I don't think it's his fault. I think that's, it's just tough for everybody to understand, including builders, and including the staff, and including consumers. So, that's what I'm asking for, is just a reconsideration of that ordinance. And I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Salee. Any questions? If not, staff, how quickly can we activate the Development Advisory Board?
I was made aware of this, I think, probably a couple weeks ago, when Mr. Allen brought it to my attention. And my initial thought at that point in time was that this might be an issue appropriate for the Development Advisory Committee to take a look at and perhaps bring a recommendation forward to the city council. But certainly, it's up to the council on how you would want to do that, because this is development policy. And it's also, in the past, you've had work sessions where you've discussed similar issues. Mr. Allen, are you able to tell the council who's currently on the Development Advisory Committee?
I can, if you give me a minute.
Yeah.
But the Development Advisory Commission is looking to meet, starting next week, to go over the 2012 building code adoption. And they could certainly add this to their agenda.
I guess the biggest concern is, time is of the essence for you, isn't it?
It is, Mr. Mayor, it is. But the staff has been willing to work with us and have given us temporary certificates of occupancy for the folks that we're working with. And we would just ask if that could continue, you know, we would be appreciative of that. But they have been very good about letting us go ahead and get us TCO and until we, until we resolve this and figure out what we're going to do.
Your Honor, just in terms of process and scheduling, our city attorney advises this would require a public hearing, would have to go to the Planning Commission, where it would be heard. Any recommendation then would come forward to the city council. So there, there is, it's not like we have the ability to expedite the work on this and make it happen within just a few days or weeks.
Okay. So, let me make sure we understand. The process is, we will make this, we will get this to the Development Advisory Council, then they would make a recommendation to the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the city council. That's the process. Okay?
Yeah. While we're talking about this, I don't think it's the first time this has been brought up before as a concern. But it might be good, while we're doing the research, to find out neighboring cities. I think they've got some, the similar issues in neighboring cities as well. I'm not sure what their policies are. Is that...
Can I answer that question? Because I believe we build, and I know probably the most, you know, closest city to us that we build in quite a bit is Lee's Summit. And I don't know of any, any type of an ordinance that has a limitation on driveway area in this front yard. Also, built in Parkville, and it does not have any limitation there. Been a while since we built in Lee Wood, Kansas. But the last time that we did build there, which has been three to four years ago, there was not an ordinance into, in effect there.
You don't believe Lee's Summit had one, though?
I know, I'm positive that they don't.
Okay. I thought they, at one time, had one, because I...
Well, they don't...
I remember a consumer complaining about it, but...
Yeah. They, I, and I currently have probably, probably have a dozen houses going on in Lee's Summit, and I'm very familiar with that, that they don't, do not. Yeah.
Maybe that was a subdivision issue. I don't know.
Could be, yeah.
Division restriction.
Anybody else?
Is there a comment?
Councilman Kabel?
Mr. Salee, I want to thank you for the way you've brought this to our attention. I really appreciate...
You're welcome.
The spirit in which you're bringing it to us and giving us the opportunity to take a look at it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate listening to me tonight, and we'll be in touch. I'm sure...
Yes, you will, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff, staff will take the lead and take care of that. Okay. I have one other visitor's appearance form from Mr. James Newport.
Hi, guys. Now, I have some unpleasant things to say today. I'll try to keep it civil. I'm asking for an Internal Affairs review of the quality of the police work I've been receiving from issues that keep occurring over and over again in my home. I've let the parties, Chief McCoy, Mr. McDonald, several of the officers in the Police Department, I've tried to tell them over the years that I'm a victim of organized crime vendetta, an organized crime vendetta. It goes back almost 30 years. And it goes to the United Auto Workers Local 249, I name names. And it goes to Ford Motor Company and their attorneys. It's called organized crime because they're organized. They use their power, their money, and their influence to use attorneys, to backchannel me through other attorneys, to get to the leadership of organizations and agencies to protect them. I've been shot at. My home has been shot. I've been threatened with knives. I've been hit and run. Bob Chancellor that run the pottery store right on this road across the street here, he was killed because of his knowledge of this case. And they got away with it. Michael D. Stitt of the 135th Signal Battalion, Missouri National Guard, was murdered to protect these people. And they got away with it. The Long Reserve Center in Independence, Missouri, I was a reservist. There's a story, backstory behind this. It was being investigated, Criminal Investigation Division. The Army NSCOM, the 902nd NSCOM, Military Intelligence Battalion, our counterintelligence and security at Leavenworth. Because I was a military intelligence analyst instructor, and our unit had access to a lot of classified materials, when I was being victimized, I reported these things. So, our unit had to be broken into. Doors taken off hinges, walls drilled through, bolts cut.
Mr. Newport?
Okay, I'm this background.
What are you asking of us?
What I'm asking is for Chief McCoy and the city to again review my complaints of criminal activity by gang. Right now, it's just a divorce. They're just punks. But the thing is, is that when you're the target of a vendetta, it's like a target of opportunity. Anything that comes up, they hear about it. I'm in litigation with these guys all the time. I testified against them in court. So, I'm a target of the vendetta, and you say, "Oh, we can cause, Mr. Newport," another problem. I come to the police, I come to the city, and I say, "Somebody knocks out my windshield." Eh, too bad. Can't do nothing about it. Can't get enough of it. Somebody's stealing stuff out of my car. Too bad. Somebody backs me into my home. Six people, two adults and four teens, backs me into my home, threatening me, scaring me. And I call the police, and they put it down, and I'm the bad guy. They said that, the guy comes to my house on Thanksgiving, this Thanksgiving, jumps out of his truck, threatens me, tries to get me to come out in his street to fight him. And they want to say, "I'm committing disorderly conduct." See, so what I'm saying...
Did you get the person's license number? Did you get all those things?
I have infinite amount of digital, high-definition videotape photographs, voices and 911 calls. 911 call from my home, from me. 911 call from my home, from me, at my house, at my house, with my 17-year-old daughter. I've raised six kids here since 1985, and I've been victimized, victimized, victimized. My dog's been poisoned. And now, I can say names. Three feds have protected him. Three federal agents, three important people in the feds. Assistant United States Attorney Stephen Hill protected him. Assistant United States Attorney Aline Castellani protected him. And current United States Attorney Jeff Ray has protected him. And it doesn't matter what I say, it doesn't matter what I do, it doesn't matter what proof I have. Every time I bring a case, it's like, huh, too bad. They shot my house one time. This has gone wrong for a long time. Blue Springs Police Department put it down as past property damage, drive-by shooting into my home with 45-caliber automatic. That's enough to really make me angry. So, I spoke with the attorney, Mr. McDonald, and he's been very respectful, which is more than I can be sometimes, because I get pretty mad about this stuff. And I said, "You know, I don't want to sue the city for deprivation of civil rights, because I have a constitutional right to tranquility at my home. And that's what I want. So, what I would like to ask you guys to do, taking in the fact that I'm a victim of organized crime, I can prove it. And I'm a victim of the feds..."
Let me ask you this question. If you're a victim of organized crime, have you turned this over to the Federal Bureau of Investigation?
And there's a word that starts with F and ends with K, and it has a U at the end of it, a little two-word sentence. Me and the FBI are on that relationship. Exactly. F-U to the FBI. They've had the knowledge. I have asked them, I wrote to senators and congressmen, and when I have told them what's going on, they'll send me a letter saying, "We're not, we don't have to give you personal protection." And then, I'm hit by cars, like, the next day, you know? So, when I said the feds are dirty, it's a Hanson kind of dirty.
I'm not sure we have a solution or answer to your question.
Okay. What I need is good police work. And what I haven't got, excuse me, Chief McCoy, is that if you were to look at the police reports, police report after police report, they're biased against me. They don't follow the law. They don't follow the precedents. And there is a prejudice out there that comes from outside of Blue Springs. It's come from outside. And it brings to mind Dirty Cop. It brings to mind the words Dirty Cop. And I've seen Dirty Cops.
Those are some pretty strong accusations. So, I think we've listened, I think we've listened to your point tonight. So...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Need some help on this.
Okay. Those are only visitor's appearance forms I have. And we do have an executive session tonight. So, I would accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters.
So, move.
Okay. Is there a second? Need a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to take about a two or three-minute break to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.